All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for holding on an extra minute or two. If everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Tompkins to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the regular meeting, December 2, 2024, Town Council Regular Meeting to order. We actually don't have any presentations this evening. We do have a couple of public hearings, and I will ask the town clerk to read the call of the public hearing, please, or hearings.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 PM on Monday, December 2, 2024, in the Municipal Center to consider, one, proposed amendment to ordinance entitled Chapter 374, Article 1, All Night Parking, and, two, use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act, associated with the following projects: Fire Department radios, in the amount of $478,355.55; Municipal Center furniture improvements, additional amount of $12,858.35; and White Oak redevelopment project, in the amount of $20,000. Copies of said proposed ordinance are available for public inspection in the office of the town clerk dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 29th day of November, 2024.
All right. Thank you. Before I open it up for public comment, I'm going to just turn to the town manager and see if you want to give us like just a quick, I know we've talked about these, the last couple of meetings, but just a quick rundown on why we're having a public hearing tonight.
Sure. Certainly. Good evening. Yes, the process for ARPA requires that we have the expenditures allocated, and as I mentioned in the last meeting, more than just a public hearing and allocation of that, but the money encumbered and under contract is the definition that the feds are looking for. So that deadline is December 31 of this year. Then we have two years to expend those funds, but they need to be under contractually obligated. So that's why we're going through these last three items. And I believe there is a revised motion on those numbers that have changed from the initial notice that we had indicated that there were previous allocations. So we've redone the numbers with respect to the allocation. So they'll look a little bit different, but we're still focused on those three items for the Fire Department radios and the furniture and improvements for Municipal Center and then White Oak Development. So the numbers have changed a little bit from the notice, but those are the items we're undertaking tonight.
And what we're voting on under New Business tonight, that's just the balance that's left to allocate from the original.
That's correct.
I guess appropriation we made.
The original right funding that we're making the final appropriations for.
Correct.
It's kind of zero, if you will, zeroing out the allocation that we see, the approximately $5.1 million, almost $5.2. So that's where we are tonight.
And any additional about the all-night parking, anything on that you want to touch on before we move forward?
Yeah, and the item two for the all-night parking is just an opportunity to visit the or revisit the ordinance and whether or not we should have, or the council would like to have more flexibility with respect to the ordinance and modifying that ordinance to take away the dates of December through April and institute a more flexible administration of event-driven events, weather forecasts for inclement weather, and be able to allow folks to, you know, park there when there isn't a storm. And I think it just helps with the individuals and the residents who we found have difficulty getting off-street because they have no off-street parking and being penalized through December and April. Not that we're, the town is not doing that, but it is dependent on the weather. So that's where we like to focus. I guess I'm not very articulate in trying to say that tonight. Sorry, tripping over my words. But that's the goal, to give more flexibility.
Okay.
That's all. It's as simple as that.
All right. Well, at this point, then, what we'll do is we'll start with the all-night parking ban public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to address the counsel on the all-night parking ban? Go ahead. You could step up, Mr. Kislik, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Please just give your name and address at the beginning. Thank you.
John Kislik, 65 Forests Avenue. Well, this parking ordinance has been in effect since 1959. It was amended in 1978, and it has worked fine all these years. Now, it's been noticed in all the papers. Now, we don't have hometown connection, but everybody knows it's from December to April. The police would go by and give warning slips for the people who don't know about it, new people move in. I would like to see this stay the same. There's other things, too. You know, we're going to have parking bans anyway besides this. A snowstorm could start 8:00 in the morning, and they're all different times. I think it's better to leave this alone and have your additional parking bans. Also, there may be times at night when the parking ban is off and the town may want to go by for touch-up, which they do late at night, and that could create a problem. I just don't see the reason for changing it. One other thing, at the last meeting, the town manager mentioned to follow something like Farmington. Farmington's a much bigger town than us, and they may have more situations with people with cluster housing or they have a problem. Plainville, there can't be that many people that have that. I don't know where these areas are, but most of the places I see, and we shouldn't change this for a handful of people or just a few people. But one other comment about Farmington that goes a little bit off, but I have time. I would like to see Plainville follow something that Farmington does. When the town manager, I mean, the town council chair allows people to speak, public speaking, he says, please name your, list your name and address, and I will give you five minutes to speak. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the parking ban public hearing this evening? All right. We will move to the second public hearing this evening. This is the appropriation of what we call ARPA funds. Anyone wish to address the second public hearing this evening? Yes. This is Puglisi.
Kathy Puglisi, 50 West Broad Street. I would like to know, there are no numbers attached to these ARPA expenditures. I am sure you have them in your motions, but they are not available for the public. Can you tell me how much is being requested for each of those items, the radios, the Municipal Center improvements, and the White Oak Development project? What are the numbers?
It's $496,355 for the, I'm sorry, Fire Department radios. For the Municipal Center furniture improvements, $2,638.87. And for the White Oak redevelopment project, $2,000.
It's $2,000 for the White Oak. What is that for exactly?
What, do we know what that's for exactly?
It's going to take care of fencing that we currently have and that we'll have to renew up for, I think indefinitely. We have a structural engineer coming in tomorrow, and we'll know additional information, but there have been some bricks that fell off from there. So that's just an expense, a carrying expense for the fence going forward. Don't know how long that will be.
Okay. And what is the status of the White Oak project? That has been discussed with the developers for about four, maybe five years now, and it, I assume the town is still the owner of that building, which puts us at risk for anything that might happen to that building, particularly what's going on on the outside. When is the town going to officially turn this over to the developer?
Well, the short answer is, once the property's cleaned up and the state has agreed that the site is properly cleaned up, but I'll let the town manager expand.
No, you're right. The Phase 1 environmental remediation of the environmental soils will have to take place first, which should occur in the spring. Soon as the, I'm not sure if they have to wait for the ground to thaw to begin that, but just waiting on approvals from deep on that, and then that'll be the first step. And then I think, I believe, if we've got the timing such that they, developers could also, as we transfer title, to go into the renovation of the front of the building, or they may, again, it's still preliminary, they may begin to go in on the outbuildings that they need to do. But once they get the soil, the front building shouldn't impact what they're doing in the back, so they could probably get started on the front. So I would believe the spring would be a good indicator.
Well, it seems to me until that occurs, until the ownership is transferred, the town of Plainville is at risk for anything that would occur on that site. And it's a concern because it has been, this has been five years?
I don't know how long it's been since it first came up, but.
Does anybody know how long that's been?
I think your point.
The town came into negotiation with that group? It's at least four years.
Oh, yeah. It's been at least four.
Okay. So the concern is that, you know, there's safety issues with that building now. It seems that it's being dragged on. I'm sure it's not intentional. However, I am concerned about the risk that the town is facing and the fact that we continue to own that building, and the likelihood of further deterioration is probably going to be something we have to look at, and the taxpayers are going to have to pay for.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the public hearing regarding ARPA Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Kislik.
John Kislik, 65 Forests Avenue. I was surprised to hear that this is the last of the funds. I was hoping that we'd have some more funds for like senior center, library, and park and rec, but we're all done?
Well, I mean, as far as allocating money, yes, but I do believe, and I don't have the list in front of me, so I'm not going to try and make up.
So do we have more in the funds still to spend?
No, we don't. This will be it.
Okay.
But we did spread money around, and again, this, you know, this does go back to the previous councils as well, that, you know, we, there are many different projects that got funded.
Right.
Through the ARPA funds.
Well, I'm going by the legal notice that was in the paper. It said White Oaks was going to get $20,000. Now it's $2,000. So that's the answer for the fence, and I understand. And the town hall here was $12,000, and that's down to what now? Going to be furniture that's going to be replaced or is a newer additional, you know?
And I'll look to the town manager if you can provide specifics on what furniture is being replaced.
Yes, we have various locations, different offices to replace, but also we'll have some additional monitors and other, not only the Municipal Center, but I think the Rec Department as well. Is that correct? Yeah. And, but essentially, the Municipal Center.
And will the stuff that it's replacing be put out for auction and sold?
Do we know, do we have an answer to that tonight?
Great, great question.
Like to use police cars and stuff like that?
I don't think we've made the evaluation yet in terms of whether it's junk or how we dispose of it at this point, but that'll be.
But that will be something you will take a look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the other thing is the Fire Department radios. I guess that's all been increased because that was $478,000, and now it's $490 something. Do the police, I mean, police, the Fire Department have radios now? Are they, do they have radios, like, are these replacing?
Yes, they have that, and we, I believe, have the representatives here, the chief and deputy chief, that could speak more specifically to that if you want to.
Well, they do have radios, yes. I can answer to that one.
It's an upgrade. I don't have the specific.
How many, how many radios are there? You don't know?
Give a number.
I don't, I don't hold you up now, but.
Well, I mean, if you just want the number, can you just?
Yeah.
It's three sites.
Okay. Did you hear that?
No.
Can you say that again?
Three sites?
Three sites. It's not one radio. We're replacing the infrastructure. Our infrastructure is over 30, 37 years old.
Okay.
Parts are no longer available.
Wish to explain better. It's like you're buying 300 radios for $400,000. That's probably what a lot of other people thought, too, unless I'm just.
Well, no, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. And the other thing you said, that this is allocated, but it's not going to all be spent now?
Correct.
So somebody, the system won't be, they'll be spread out over time.
When we were given the funds, we needed to allocate the funds by the end of this calendar year. We don't have to spend them until the end of next calendar year, I believe.
Okay. So you're going to spread it out.
Or '26. So we have two years to actually spend the money.
Okay.
But we do have to have it all allocated by the end of this calendar year.
And, so I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if the, if the chief, if you don't mind, I think it would be helpful if they could give a little bit more detail on the program. That's why they're here tonight.
Yes. Do you care to give like the executive summary? Thank you.
Adrian Paradise, Deputy Fire Chief.
Tom Machini, Fire Chief, Plainville Fire. What we're doing is we're kind of infrastructure. The infrastructure we have now is from 1988. We've been piecemealing this together. If we find, we found a broken part a few years ago, there was no replacement. Our vendor found it in someone's garage in New Jersey. So we're at the point where we can't, we just can't do it anymore. It should have been updated quite a while ago. We updated, but it's time to change. And my deputy is well aware of it. He's in the business of radios and antennas, and he can explain more what we're getting with that.
So currently, the Fire Department has three sites, one at the firehouse that everybody sees, and there's two other receive-only sites. One's located on top of Tofflon School. The other one is located on top of Lowe's Home Improvement. That helps increase our coverage when we use our mobile and portable radios to get back to dispatch. With the new system and with the, some laws that have changed, anybody that's a business owner may have already dealt with it, in-building systems for police and fire coverage within a building. We're looking to change these other two sites, the Lowe's and Tofflon, to both a transmit and receive location. With the, with that antenna being a transmit antenna, it's going to help our in-building coverage for when we talk on portables. So we're looking to upgrade that as well.
Okay. All right.
Just have one thing. This will be a backup radio for the PD. It is now. So if their radio goes down, we can't do anything with their computers. If their radios come down, they can come right and sit behind our console and dispatch all their cars and any talking they need. They could do it now, but that needs to be upgraded, too. So it's got a twofold to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the second public hearing this evening? All right. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearings. We can move on to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Christopher.
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 18, 2024 Special and Regular Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, announcements and reports. Nothing tonight? Okay. Any announcements or reports?
Ooh.
All right. No announcements or reports. I know it was a holiday, so not much was happening in the last week or so. We do have some appointments this evening and some resignations. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Gettleman.
Would like to make a motion with regret to accept the resignation of Rebecca Martinez from the Board of Education.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to appoint Anthony Wozley to the Board of Education for the term ending November 4, 2025. Well, we don't need the rest of it.
Yeah, you can stop there.
Yeah.
We'll explain. All right. Is there anyone with a second?
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. And we did get a letter of resignation this evening. If anyone needs to see it, the town manager has it. That's the reason we're not going to add the contingent upon his resignation from Recreation and Park Advisory Board. So we did receive it. But at this point, any questions, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other appointments or resignations this evening? All right. Anything from the Chair of the Board of Education you want to share tonight? I know it's technically the first meeting of the month and not the third, but you're all set. All right. And item seven, report of the town attorney. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Hope everybody had a nice holiday over Thanksgiving. Excuse me. I did have a couple of comments I wanted to make. I seem to be getting a little more static tonight for some reason. I did want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to address something that was mentioned at the last meeting, and I just wanted to say that I've been a town attorney for over 30 years, and I generally don't live in the towns I represent. I find, I live in Weathersfield. My firms have been town attorneys for Weathersfield, and I've generally avoided representing Weathersfield because I live there. I've represented them in cases that were in court for litigation cases, but I have found that my own personal opinion is, and I'll give an example, I think it would be easy to understand, we had the referendum here for the schools. So as a lawyer, if I was a young lawyer and I had children and I lived in the town, I'd have an interest with regard to that. I'm 67. My kids are out of school. I'm happy. They're out of the house. My interest is to see my taxes below. Once again, the referendum, if I lived here, directly impacts me. So in my view, I've always personally taken the view that to avoid real conflicts, you're better off not living in the town you represent as a lawyer. That's been my view, and I've just explained why. So I just wanted to make that, make that statement after the last meeting. Now, I'm going to go into my next topic. This afternoon, we received a preliminary draft report regarding an investigation, or review might be a better way to phrase it, of our volunteer fire department. And I have received a draft report. We've had some discussions regarding that report. However, we only have part of it. And so up until the entire report is completed, as well as we've had an opportunity, it's very lengthy to properly review it. I would not make any real comments, other than to say that from my review of the report, it appears that the council that we retained has found some real structural problems with the operation and management of the volunteer fire department. And I believe that that would also be a proper subject for the Charter Revision Commission that I recommended the last time. Once the report is reviewed and it is, becomes public part of it, at least, I think that my recommendations would be much clearer in regard, in that regard. So that, I wish that I had the report before I brought this up last month, because it would have been a more comprehensive recommendation on my part. But I did want to bring that up, so that you know that it is coming, because once again, as we discussed previously, Charter Revision has a timetable for us to be able to get there in time. And so if we're going to be adding things to the things to be looked at, I want to do it in a timely manner so it can be properly done. And I think that once you get the report, then we can decide if it's proper, how to go about doing this. But I think that I certainly am going to bring it up right now to warn you that this is coming. So that's the conclusion of my remarks, and I invite any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments for the town attorney?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your report. Item eight, report of the town manager. Good evening.
Good evening. I have five items, and then I'll hand off to Andy for happenings. But item number one, the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Phase 3 alignment. I'd like to thank the members that were able to join us for that walking audit that we did with the department. We were looking at the connection from Norton Park along Route 177 South Washington, which yielded additional information that will be needed for their analysis. The state DOT is committed to looking at various modifications and alternatives for Phase 3, with a desire to implement the best possible route through the middle of town. There is an item under Old Business to approve the alignment and authorize conduct to move forward with 30% design, but given the ongoing review, I believe this item should remain on the table. I think it was, I think it was a good outing. I think you learn a lot from a walk at pedestrian speed that you don't pick up in a car, and certainly you're, we're able to stop and look and focus, take notes, take pictures. I think there was a lot of information gathered in that. And we also had the opportunity on, so we walked out from Norton Park up as far as the section of Main Street and then, and then back. And on the way back, a part of the group with DOT officials took a look at Broad Street and potentially even looking at Hemingway as a possibility. So again, they are looking, working with us, looking at, you know, feasible or potentially feasible alternatives to try and make this, again, the best possible route. It's the most complicated. I don't think anybody disagrees the most complicated portion. So we want to just make sure we try to get it right. So I think it was fruitful, and I think, you know, we'll hear more from that, but I think that item should likely remain on the table for now.
Okay.
Item number two, just want to comment on the downtown holiday spectacular. This event is scheduled for Thursday, December 12, starting at 5:00 PM. I'll have a Santa's Workshop is scheduled to begin at 5:00 PM at the Plainville Public Library for children three to five years of age, and will feature crafts and music. Traditional Wave to Santa Parade will take place downtown and not at Norton Park. The parade will include decorative classic cars, construction trucks, and Santa on a fire truck. The event will finish with a tree lighting ceremony with Santa at the Plainville Firehouse, and the Plainville Firehouse will have hot chocolate and cookies and pictures with Santa and a performance by the high school chamber choir. So just wanted to have a chance to promote that. I know I'm stealing a lot of Andy's thunder there for that, but appreciate the group coming together to coordinate and plan that. So it's shaping up to be a great event. Any questions? Okay. Item three, winter reminders. As now we move into December, as winter approaches, the town wishes to remind residents of the following policies and ordinances which are posted on our website under winter reminders and also shared on our social media accounts. The mailbox policy. Residents should evaluate their mailbox to ensure it can stay. The mailbox policy, residents should evaluate their mailbox to ensure it can stand up to New England winter and is compliant with the town's mailbox replacement policy. Responsibilities to remove snow, ice from sidewalks no later than 24 hours after the end of snowfall. The prohibition from plowing, throwing, or putting snow or ice in a public roadway or street. Fire hydrant snow removal, clearing a three-foot circle around fire hydrants and keeping them accessible. And prohibition on the all-night parking ban, which currently stands unless there's a modification to the ordinance from December 1st to April 1st. That's it for winter reminders.
All right. Any questions on that? All right. Number four.
Number four, update on the landfill closure obviously is, is proceeding, and we have an opportunity to make an adaptive reuse of that by putting solar on top in, on the crown, so to speak. So we issued a RFP 2025-15 for the development of solar photovoltaic system at the former Plainville landfill site at 23 Granger Lane. The RFP invites proposals from, for long-term lease of the site for designing, permitting, installing, and maintaining a one-to-two megawatt solar array system, a ground mount system. And the RFP was issued November 20th, 2024, with a mandatory site visit scheduled for December 9th, 10:00 AM. Interested developers must submit inquiries by December 11th, 2024, and responses are due by December 19th, 2024, at 12:00 PM. The project seeks to optimize the use of the capped landfill by generating renewable energy while providing environmental and economic benefits to the town. Now, these often become very complex with Z-Rex and other, you know, buybacks and things of that nature, or writing it in such a way that we try to be as flexible as we can in evaluating the best possible proposal, so we're not wedded into one way or the other with respect to how solar projects can be structured. So we'll wait and see what comes in terms of a response, but it's a great opportunity to generate revenue for the, for the town.
All right. Any questions? All right. Next.
Item number five, the, is a request from Trump, Inc. The head of marketing from Trump reached out to the town requesting a street name change. They are expanding their presence by opening a new smart manufacturing factory with an event in May of 2025 with several high-profile dignitaries from across the globe attending. And they are requesting the change of the name of Johnson Avenue to the name of their company's founder, and they would like to unveil the street name change at that event in May. The street is both in the town of Plainville and the town of Farmington, so they will need to coordinate with both, both towns. The section in question is, I believe, on the eastern side near the trailhead portion. I do, I did provide maps for, to try and orient the council to understand. It's the green section that's highlighted there. And there is only, there are no residents, so this is the section on other side of Northwest Drive. It's not on the other side of the airport, not Northwest Drive, so it's not, there are no residents there. There's just one property, and that belongs to Aquarian Water Company. I believe it's just their pump station, I believe. So I'm in the process of reviewing the steps. This is just informational. It's not an action item. If, you know, the council is interested in any way, shape, or form of pursuing the process, I've got a review. I don't think the town council, the town has done, I'm told, a name change in decades. So I just want to be clear about that process, but I wanted to bring it to your attention early on so that you could evaluate it, see if it makes sense at, at all for, for the town. And that's why I'm bringing it to you. I'd be happy to, we'll continue to do the legwork on it. I was hoping to get a, a conversation in with the manager in Farmington, but I was not able to do so today. But we'll, rest of this week, try to track this down and look historically at, I think, was a change from to the street into high school, Robert Holcomb Way.
Yep. Robert Holcomb Way, yeah.
From Walnut to Robert Holcomb Way. So I'll start there and look at that process and
All right.
Bring more information. If there's any specific questions the council has, please let me know, and I can try and find out.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mike, was that street named after a war hero, Johnson Avenue?
Great question. I don't know.
Because honor heights, I know that's, I, I was a resident of Hillman Court, and I know for a fact that all those streets in that area were named after people who served. And my concern is that maybe Rosemary would know, you know?
I don't, I know there was a first election in the 1920s that was named Johnson that lived in that area, but I'm not sure if it's named after him or not.
And am I right in my assumption, you're not looking to change Johnson Avenue completely, only a portion of it?
Only a portion of it, yeah. That section that is by the trailhead and, and goes into, into Farmington as it outlined in the, on the map there. No residences. It's just, just one, one listing of one property, and that belongs to Aquarian.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. Anything else under the town manager's report? Any other questions or comments before we go to happenings? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to Andy.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone had a lovely Thanksgiving. Couple happenings going on. First of all, just a few public service announcements. The town's transfer station on Granger Lane will close for the winter season on Saturday, December 7th. It will reopen for a few weeks after Christmas for the exclusive purpose of residents' disposal of Christmas trees, but for general disposal and of items, that's going to be ending this Saturday, and then it'll reopen in April. Leaf collection is ongoing. It will also end on December 7th, on Saturday. Weather permitting, of course, we may get some snow later in the week, which may delay or alter that timeline. The Plainville Fire Company is having a Christmas tree sale at the Firehouse. It started on November 29th, and it'll be ending on Sunday, December 8th. Trees are $75 each, and they're also selling wreaths as well. And you can visit the Fire Company's Facebook page for hours and for more information. The Plainville Fire Company is also, also hosting their annual breakfast with Santa on Sunday, December 8th, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Firehouse. You can check out the Plainville Fire Company's Facebook page for more information. From the Plainville Senior Center, and for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728, and all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. A tree trimming and carol singing on Tuesday, December 3rd, at 2:00 PM. You could join for their annual decorating of their Christmas tree while singing holiday songs. There will be hot cocoa cookies and a good group of friends. The gingerbread house contest is on Monday, December 9th, at 10:00 AM. The cost is $5, and the contest, I believe there's maybe prizes for a winner? So join in, and you could find out. Technology Tuesday on December 10th is from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's by appointment only, and a representative of the library staff will come down to the Senior Center to assist with any technical issues that folks may be having with their phone, their tablet, or their laptop. The Plainville High School Chamber Choir will be at the Senior Center on Tuesday, December 9th, Tuesday, December 17th, at 3:00 PM. The choir will be invited to sing a combination of traditional carols, classic holiday songs, and traditional winter choral music. You could join for the special concert and the reception to follow, but they ask that you please call the Senior Center to register. And Tofflon School Christmas Concert at the Senior Center is on Wednesday, December 18th, at 11:00 AM. You could join the students of Tofflon School as they spread Christmas cheer and perform Christmas favorites, favorites. That is all I have today for happenings.
All right. Thank you. Before we go to public comments, is there any questions, any comments for the town manager or assistant town manager? All right. Thank you again. We'll now move to item nine, public comments. Anyone who wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium. Give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. The first ring means you have 30 seconds left. The second ring means time has run out. Do you want to be first tonight? That's just where my eyes ended up, John. I'm sorry.
John Kissler, 65 Forestville Avenue. Maybe you can be a little kind to me and give me an extra minute tonight. You know, we're getting close to the Christmas spirit. I want to talk a little bit, I got to go through this pretty fast. We talked a lot about tenure rights last meeting, and I believe the town manager has tenure as, as soon as he's hired and he goes to work with all the, he's bound by all the provisions in the charter and his contract. And the only thing I saw in our charter, Chapter 10, Section 2, it was when the, when the charter first went into effect, anyone who had, I misinterpreted this at first, who had been working for the town for three months, they automatically had tenure. And I don't know if that three-month thing is something the originators thought might be a number, but it doesn't say it anywhere else. Okay? Besides that, all of you know, or you should know, we had charter revision last year. Councilwoman Christopher was on that charter. And on the question of compensation for the town council members, the commission voted six to one to have no compensation, so it never went to the public. And on the question of two years or four years, the commission actually studied 169 towns, and they came up with a decision after our attorney, Michael Mastriani, local, long-term resident, served this council very well, as far as I'm concerned, pointed out a lot of the negative impacts of four-year terms. I don't know what they were, because I wasn't on there, but they voted five to two to stay with two years. And I don't think we should be trying to change this charter every year. I thought there was something to look at it every five years. I wish we wouldn't do this. You shouldn't be trying to change a charter every time something comes up. That's my opinion. Now, the other thing I have is strictly for transparency, the town manager's Second Amendment to his contract, because it doesn't come out anywhere. He received a 3% pay of $5,278, which makes his salary $181,228. He gets 4% put into a deferred comp and 10 and a half into deferred, defined contributions. Now, I just let it go at that. I want people to know how we're paying our town manager. I'm not saying he doesn't deserve it or anything. This is just to say it. Now, I know town manager's having a difficult time finding a house, and sure, there's no way he's going to find a four-bedroom, two-bath Cape like he probably wants to replace. But he's not the only one who had this problem. During the election, I was campaigning for our president, and I happened to have the pleasure of running into Pam Jackson, the widow of a former town, town manager. She told me when they moved to Plainville, there was like three houses, and none of them fit their needs. They actually had to build their own house to get what they needed. So it was tough back then, too, for other people. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council this evening? Yes.
Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin, wrote, I know during their report to the town manager, he had mentioned that the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail is being, I'm sorry, what did you say? Put to the side for now?
Table.
Table.
Table. Thank you. And that basically means during the November 20th walk, you found some things that need to be questioned, and that's good. That says a lot. My question is, for clarification, can someone tell me, or even as well as the public, what is the deadline that the DOT has regarding this? Because they gave us a, a deadline on September 30th. How does that work with this?
That, I don't have the, I haven't been told a deadline, but I don't know if we have a deadline.
I, I don't, I don't recall any deadline. I'm not aware of any deadlines, so I, I can find, try and find out. I mean, there's, again, I guess there could be several deadlines, depending on what, if you're talking about a design deadline or when they need to have, you know, expenditure of funds, like we talk about ARPA and so forth. I know it's federally funded. It's coming through, you know, the, the state, so I can try and find out as much as I can, but I don't have the answer at this point.
The reason why I'm saying that is when this project started in February of 2018, this town council was given a 400-page document, plus the day of the vote. Many people came up here and said, wait, don't do this. Read it, make you sure you understand it. Make sure the attorney's involved. And that didn't happen. We don't want to repeat history again. We want to make sure everybody's understanding everything before anything is done. My second question has to do with this particular grant, or any grant for that matter. Does anybody have access to it or has been able to truly read it and understand it, especially our attorney, in terms of what our limitations may be or requirements would be with this grant? I mean, I understand that the DOT is, got somewhat of a shock factor when this county council said, wait a minute, back up, this doesn't look right. But we really need to see the, understand the grant, and has that been done yet? And also, is that available to the public? Because if you apply something to a, a scholarship or a grant at your, at the high school or college, you get to see what it looks like. You get to see what's going on, what your limitations are, what your GPA has to be. So is any of that available for people to be able to look at, especially our attorney?
I don't know the answer. I'm sure that I'm going to
I, I would, I would
Something we can find out, though.
I guess, yes, that it would be available at some point. I, I don't know when they make that available, and, and I'm speculating that it happens after design before construction, because I, what I do know is that as part of the agreement, when it's constructed, that the town will have an obligation to maintain. And that's, you know, again, those, the detail has not been worked out yet until these pieces, all three pieces, get designed so you know exactly, you know, what they're building, what they're constructing, constructing, and then what we will need to be required to, to maintain, so.
According to what I understand, and I'm, I'm not a contract expert, based on what was been explained in terms of this 30% for that design phase, you have to approve that first. That's the problem. That's why I'm saying, why aren't we seeing that proposed grant before any of this happens? So we really know what we're getting ourselves into, not after the vote, and then all of a sudden we have 30% and now we're stuck? Now we have limitations and regulations that nobody was aware of.
Well, we could certainly find, I mean, there's got to be something in writing related to the grant.
This is something that everybody from this town council should be asking for, as well as our attorney. We need to know what we're getting into before you raise your hand as a yea or an nay. And it should be available to the people to be able to read it and truly understand that. So when they come up here to ask these questions, they know what they're asking about. I mean, you don't, most people, if you buy a house and you can ask our attorney, somebody reads the contract before you sign it.
Yeah.
That's what should be happening here as well. That's all I'm saying.
Nope.
Nobody should be saying, well, we're not sure. At this stage in the game, you should know what we're going to be, what, what you're going to be voting on, whether, no matter what the date is, what the, the changes you're requesting.
Yep.
And it should be available to people to truly understand what is going on, particularly the people that are going to be seriously impacted.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. We will certainly do some research and see what's out there as far as documentation as we move forward. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Yes.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
How are you all doing?
Good.
Everybody have enough turkey?
That's, yes.
I'm Marilyn Shoret, 18 Milford Street, Plainville. And I hope you're not going to be upset with me tonight, but you might not like me. I would like to respectfully request that I would like to respectfully request that we have a report on a monthly basis on the progress of the search for residency by Mr. Paul House here in Plainville, and I think it should be open to the public on a monthly basis. That sound good?
Yes, that sounds good. I'm not just going to tell you we're going to do that. That's not my place right here and right now to do that, but I've heard you.
Oh, okay.
I wrote it down.
Okay. Well, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
Also, personally, I'm not really, really happy with the way that contract was written up. There's a lot of loopholes, and at the end of the day, this could get dragged on for years, and I would have thought that you all would have seen that. Okay.
Well, and just in fairness, that's one of the things we talked about the last meeting was the fact that there, regarding the charter and the residency requirement, there are some gray areas, as the town attorney expressed at the last meeting, and one of the reasons we think we do need the charter revision is to take a look at some of the, you call them loopholes, to take a look at that.
I want to address that comment because the contract amendment was based on the contract that we had when I came here, that existed when I became town attorney. It's not a contract that I would have drafted or approved, but it was what was given to me, so that was the best that we could do, just for the record.
Well, I do have personal concerns about it, and I'm not saying Mr. Paul House isn't doing a good job or anything like that, you know?
It's not personal.
No, nothing personal. I just feel as though this is an important issue to the residents of this town, and they voted one way, and I feel like we're getting a little curve there. So that's my issues for tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. You still have 30 seconds. That was just the first.
I do.
Yeah. You're all set. All right. Thank you. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? All right. Seeing no one, we will close public comments and move on to old business, which we have decided we are going to leave on the table for the time being. New business, item 11. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Tompkins.
Motion to adopt the proposed amendment to an ordinance entitled Chapter 374, Article Number One, All Night Parking.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number two, and just, we have had a request made to do these separately and not all as one group. So if someone wants to do A under number two?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following project: fire department radios in the amount of $496,355.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Anything you guys haven't shared already that you think we need to know? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, B.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following project: municipal center furniture and improvements for an additional amount of $2,638.87.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and item C.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Getteman.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following project: white oak redevelopment project in the amount of $2,000.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and item number three.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Moranti.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything, any other discussions of interest for this evening?
I don't have any.
Anyone have any other discussions of interest from the council perspective? All right. So at this point, if I could have a motion to go into executive session?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
Second.
And this is regarding pending claims. We don't anticipate the council coming out and making any kind of motion, so we won't be coming back out to conduct any other business after executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll see everyone in back in five minutes or so. Thank you.